This is the May 19th meeting of the Porter County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner, good. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Kurt. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, just a little past 10 o'clock in the morning. We're going to move right into the consent agenda. What we have is on the consent agenda, Kurt will be probably getting the agenda posted here any minute, but on the consent agenda, we have approval of payroll, April 17th, May 1st, and May 15th, 2020. Approval of claims, April 30th, May 7th, and May 14th, 2020. Approval of minutes, April 14th and April 23rd, 2020. Treasurers monthly report filed March 31st, 2020, and April 30th, 2020. And then we have the mate waits and measures monthly report filed for February 16th to March 15th, 2020, and March 16th to April 15th, 2020. And then we also, and I think that, okay, so that is the consent agenda. I apologize. So I'll throw it to the floor for our board to take action.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Blaney. And a second for Commissioner Biggs. Roll call, please, Kurt. Or no, roll call, madam auditor. She's joined us on this meeting. I'm sorry, Vicki. Well, I thought she was there.
Yeah, hold on. I'm sorry. Okay, Commissioner, good.
No worries. Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Okay, three zero, and the eyes have it. So now we're going to get into announcements. The Porter County Board of Commissioners has an appointment for the Gary Chicago Airport Board. And we've gotten or received an application from Wes Cottis, who is an individual that lives in Valparaiso and has a business in downtown Valparaiso. And I have talked with Wes about the board and what's entailed with it. And he's put in a application, and that is what we have in front of us today. So I'll throw it to the board for any questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the nomination of.
Okay, we have a motion, I think, from Commissioner Biggs, and a second from Commissioner Blaney. Any further discussion? Roll call, madam.
That works.
Commissioner, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney. Okay, Commissioner Blaney?
Yes. Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs? Three to zero.
Yes.
Thank you, madam. Thank you. So we will get with Mr. Cottis and find out when the next board meeting is. I'm sure they're working through COVID things too up there on the airport board, but we'll get you tuned into that, you know, over the next several weeks. So thank you and welcome aboard, Wes, helping serve the county. Next up, we have new business. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to announce, nothing crazy. But I wanted to let everybody know that in and around the Valparaiso area on West Street, this is Bridge 1001. That's over by the old Bridgeview Theater, the Applebee's, that West Street is the road that runs parallel to 30 behind all of that development within there. We had a bridge there that was in the city of Valparaiso that span across Salt Creek. So it was a special bridge that we only had certain amount of time to work over because it's a protected tributary. And I drove that, we got in there, got the bridge done and completed, and the road is back up, and I drove it yesterday, and it turned out real well. So I just wanted to let everybody know that Bridge 1001 is completed and the road is open and the the bridge looks great. So just wanted to announce that because I know that road was shut down for a little bit there to to get that in, and I think everybody, we we got that done. Reese Riley was the contractor, and I think they got that bridge done very quickly. And then the other thing I'd like to again mention is the county through the redevelopment commission is constructing a substation garage on 700 North up in the South Haven area, and I drove by that project the other two days ago. And it looks like most of the metal tin outside and the brick is on on the outside. And I talked with the construction folks, and I believe that they're planning on pouring the floor there in the next couple of weeks. So if we could just get some dry weather and we could get that area, that job site a little bit drier, I think we we're getting to the point where that that project should finish up relatively pretty quickly. Good Lord willing with doesn't continue to rain. So again, further progress and further things going along, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to announce that. So any other announcements or anything else that the other board members want to talk about, here's your opportunity. Okay. Next up, we have commissioners. Okay. And I think I believe Commissioner Blaney, I saw an email come out from the waste and waste and recycling department. And it sounds that during COVID and all the time that everybody's had to self-reflect on their homes and other things, our little place there in Valpo between the city of Valparaiso and the waste and recycling department have seen a steady, steady, steady volume of people coming into that area to pick up mulch and drop off tree limbs and all kinds of things. So I know we were able to keep that facility open with the help of Valparaiso and in the county. And from what we're hearing, we're getting quite we're getting quite a lot of people going in there and using that service in that area. So that's a good thing. And I think that in these times, these type of things that we were able to keep open, I think, really helped a lot of people do their yard work and maybe not go stir crazy. So we're glad we're able to keep that open and keep it moving. So good, good reminder, Laura. Thank you.
One last thing, when we reopened it, we also decided to waive the fees for a few months here.
So there you go, folks. You might want to get in there before we close her down, not trying to get a rush at the door here, but that was a good, I think it was a good move by the district and I think this is where, again, we try to be helpful and not try to get in people's way trying to stay busy and get things done. So thank you for that announcement. Okay, I'm going to move on here to the North County Annex pay apps. We're going to vote, we're going to look at, we're going to deal with these things. Let me see here. Okay, so in the North County Annex, Commissioner Biggs and Commissioner Laura Blaney, Commissioner Laura, wow, Commissioner Blaney. The we can all do in one bid because these are just standard pay apps. So we can, we can work, move on one through seven, correct Attorney McClure?
That's correct. They're all pay applications.
So that would be the motion would be through pay one through seven. So just wanted to throw that out to the other two commissioners, and I'll throw it to you for action.
A motion to approve the North County pay apps, one through seven on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blaney and a second by Commissioner Biggs. Any further discussion? All in favor, roll call, madam auditor.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Three to zero.
Attorney McClure, before we move on to 157 Franklin, I know since you deal a lot in the North County Courts in business and other things, I know several weeks ago you took a tour of the building. And I know I talked to our construction folks, but I did not tour the building because of COVID. Could you sort of give us a little bit of an insight of how close we are to finishing that building up there? And and I know we're getting close, but I know you got eyes on it. Could you give us a little bit of a description as to what you saw and and in your thoughts?
Things are coming along very nicely. The driveway has had, the whole parking lot has the top coat put on, the parking lot's been striped. When I was out there, they were looking for those pesky low spots that water may sit in to go ahead and get those taken care of. The outbuilding or the additional building that was added in this project for all intensive purposes is completed. The courthouse itself on the addition, the Sally Port and the secure parking lot are finished. The for the new courtroom is finished. And I think we're probably about two to three weeks away from the majority of the building being completed, which would allow us to start to schedule and look at moving people back into their original places. With the courtroom, with the original DO3 or Superior Court III courtroom, once that's completed, the same timeline would would have the prosecutor's office, the clerk's office. Several of the offices completed within North County's complex, which would allow us to move people back to their final locations. And then we probably still have another six weeks or so for that third courtroom to be completed as it's currently being utilized as it is for Superior Court III. So as soon as their original court is done, we can move them back to their space. And then we can finish the remodel of that courtroom. So basically, I think the only department that will be left will be that third courtroom, which will be not manned on a daily basis. And a couple of offices before the probation as they are close to that courtroom in the same space that that will be being expanded into. But the rest of the building and the outbuilding will be complete probably the next two to three weeks. So things are coming along very nicely.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we're going to move now to the 157 Franklin pay applications. Just want to let the board know that items one, two, and three, we will be bidding, we will be voting on separately. And then items four through seven will be in one vote. So the first one on the agenda is Pangier Corp. This is change order number three in the amount of $47,259. And it's to provide all wall revisions in the 911 center, one hour fire rating for room 021. Materials to repair damaged parts for both elevators and drywall repairs for areas removed during remediation. So what this is, and talking with the contractor several days ago, when we took over the building, as you guys recall, as as you all recall, there was some drywall and some work that had already been done prior to just shelling out the building. When we, when we took over the building and started looking at a lot of this drywall, some of it was not done properly. We had some moisture get into it, so we had we we had to get rid of some of this drywall on on several of the floors. So basically, what this is, is a lot of work that through the job Pangier went in, cut out a lot of drywall, repaired a lot of drywall, got the fire ratings right in the rooms that needed to be done. And this was just an area between the difference between what we bought and what we were building. And so we we just felt that it was best to cut all this out now and do it right. And that that is what that change order is for, and and the hours and everything have been qualified by Skilman. So that is the explanation that I wanted to give to the board. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Motion to approve change order number three for Pangier Corp.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Blaney and a second from Commissioner Biggs. Roll call, madam auditor.
Is Commissioner good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
I think Jim's screen froze again. It looks like he's frozen from where I'm looking at. Refresh?
Yes.
There it is.
There you go.
Thank you, Jim. Um. Madam auditor, did you hear Commissioner Biggs vote?
Yes.
That's a second.
No, I didn't. Commissioner Biggs?
Second to Laura's motion.
Okay. So now we we just need to vote now. All those, I can't say that. Madam auditor. Commissioner Biggs, vote.
Okay, Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Okay, so three zero.
We had already voted Jim when we lost you. So yeah, we were just trying to get you caught up, that's all.
Yeah, I'm working with the, I'm in the county building nationally. I'm working with a delay because of the steel roof, so bear with me.
Yeah, we we experienced this the last time. I think we have probably some county folks in the building that are probably streaming this as well, so may want to find a a good place, but good luck. Okay. Number two on the list is EC Babila. And EC Babila is the roofer on this project. And I talked a little bit about this change order as well with Skilman. This was at the top of the, I think, when we first bought the building and we did our analysis on it, we were, we thought that we would not, we would not need to do much work on the roof. And then once we got into the building and and started taking a look at where a lot of rooftop units and other things were to go, we we could have probably patched a lot of things. But we felt that since we were spending so much money on renovating this building, that it would be sort of penny wise and and, you know, dollar foolish or whatever the the expression is to not put a new roof on it and start at the beginning. We were just afraid that we would be chasing water leaks around forever on an older roof. So we've gone ahead and have have fit a new roof into the budget of this building. One of the things that needed to be done is in around the area of the outside area of the roof, there's metal cap that goes on there. That metal cap actually has to be fastened to some type of substrate, structure, wood, or whatever. They did not have that up there at the time. So when we put a new metal cap on and a new roof, this was the price to go around the entire building and put all new wood backing in and everything else for the metal cap. So basically, now we have a whole roof and a whole new metal cap. And that's what the difference is for that dollar amount was that metal cap and that backing work.
Motion to approve change order number one for EC Babila.
Second.
Okay, we have Commissioner Blaney motion and Jim, Commissioner Biggs second. Madam auditor.
Commissioner, good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Zero.
Okay, the next one is Continental Electric. This is change order number two in the amount of $37,683. This is to provide 911 power revisions, temporary power to existing furnaces. That was so we could have construction heat during the project to wire up our existing furnaces in there and and keep heat in the building. We revised a lot of circuit breakers for our condensing that we got when we bought the building. And we have some revised wiring to the elevators that needed to take place that wasn't done properly when we bought the building. So we, there's a lot of electrical work in there that was basically fixing some of the things that were already there and taking care of other things in the 911 center because obviously there's a lot of of power, unique power situations going on in the 911, and we're still working through a lot of those things on that floor. So that is the breakdown of the electrical change order for explanation for you all. Thank you.
Thank you for the breakdown, and I will make a motion to approve change order number two for Continental Electric.
Well, I will.
Catch that? Second.
There we go.
There we go. We got it. We have a motion and a second, madam auditor.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Three to zero.
Okay, so now we go through pay number four on the on the agenda, number four through seven. We can vote on all at once. These are just standard pay apps for the job, the dollar amounts. And the remaining balances are on the agenda, so I'll put it to the floor for the board to take action.
Motion to approve change orders at 157 Franklin Street, excuse me, not change orders, pay apps. Numbers four through seven, as noted on our agenda.
Second, your motion, Commissioner Blaney.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Thank you, Jim. All those, oh, I'm sorry, madam auditor.
Yes, Commissioner, good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move in, move a little faster here. We have, this is for EMA. And what this is, is the Porter County Shoreline Disaster Emergency Declaration and Travel Restrictions. As you may or may not know, this is something that the county had declared quite some time ago for the shoreline disaster declaration and travel restrictions. And as you might or might not know, these emergency declarations only last 30 days at a time. So we're basically coming back in our monthly meeting again, and we're we're going to be acting on the next 30 days for this to keep this in place to, you know, for the area up there for whatever need. So that's what this is. It's a another 30 day extension of the shoreline disaster emergency declaration and travel restriction. Did I say that right, Attorney McClure?
You did.
Motion to approve as discussed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, madam auditor.
Commissioner, good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Three to zero.
Thank you. Next up is E911 Department. And what we have here, I'll I'll turn it over to Attorney McClure to give the description. I know you've looked at the contract, and I know we've we we moved on something similar to this about four months ago in the downtown courthouse. But Scott, I'll let you give the update here.
Well, ironically, we addressed this several months ago also with the doubt with the Valparaiso courthouse. Unfortunately, due to the installation date and the invoice date and the end of the year, that appropriation that had already been done through the council and the commissioners expired. So the first additional appropriation from front 1222, we've already done one time. It's just this time is a little bit less because the Valpo courthouse was in the first time around. The second, the second additional, and both of these are coming from non-general funds, it's coming from the fee-based, the the 911 fee-based fund from the home phones and from the cellular phones, the fees that come to 911 for that. So both of these would be coming from that particular fund of money. The second request is for the is for the analog logging recorder that was out of life and we had to replace. So those are the two requests for the additionals that then would be put on the next council meeting in June.
Can I make a motion for both of these at the same time?
Yes.
A motion to approve both additionals noted on our agenda for 911.
Second, your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Attorney McClure, so the 80,792, that is for the bidirectionals for both the courthouse and the juvenile detention center.
It was for, this one is a this might be for both, and they just didn't get paid because of the invoice date being at the end of the year.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, so. Madam auditor.
Is Commissioner good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
We've lost Commissioner Biggs temporarily.
Okay. So two to zero, or will we wait for Commissioner Biggs to come back?
The motion passed two to zero.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, we have Ray Cloyd Facilities. What we have here is some disposal service agreements for the for the the following buildings. We have the Juvenile Detention Center for $225 a month for disposal service, Memorial Opera House in the amount of $68 per month, Sheriff's Department in jail in the amount of $434 per month, North County Annex in the amount of $96 per month, and the EMA Hazmat Building in the amount of $42 a month. And this would be all under Buildings Facilities.
Motion to approve the five disposal agreements.
And I will second. Madam auditor.
Okay, Commissioner, good?
Yes.
And Commissioner Blaney?
Yes, and I believe that Jim is back.
Okay, and Commissioner Biggs?
Yeah, you picked me. I like, yes.
He's back.
Got to keep your words short. You don't know whether you're going to go or not.
That is, this is brutal, brutal.
Okay, and then we have on this department too, we have Effie Moran Fire Protection. This is a life safety system inspection and testing for the county government buildings for three years. I'm glad to see we were finally able to get. All of our fire protection and testing under one contract. I know that had taken us a while to work through a lot of our different services agreements. This is the best way to go and it gives us the best pricing and the best accountability. For a fire protection service provider for us, so this, this looks good. Attorney McClure, have you reviewed the contract?
I have, and it's in good form.
Okay, good. I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Auditor?
Yes, Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Three to zero.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to give a shout out to our Buildings Facilities Department. They have been spectacular through all this. I, I, I can't even begin to tell the citizens of this county. Amount of work that these gentlemen have done over this time period. They're making Plexiglas, they're. I mean, when, when we open up the county building. We're gonna be, people are gonna be surprised because the building is now all painted on the inside. We have some new signage and some new other things, but. They've been, you know, they've been out in the jail dealing with all the situations that are happening out there during all this, but. I know they've, they've, they've just about been everywhere. A lot of the cleaning protocols, a lot of, I mean, they're sort of at the epicenter of all this for us. And I can certainly say without this department, they have made things so much. Easier for us to implement and they're self thinkers, they're smart and. I just would really appreciate their, what they've done through all this and not one complaint, not whatever, so. Ray Cloyd and the gang, thank you so much for everything you've done and will continue to do. But I just wanted to give a shout out. I didn't know if any of the other commissioners wanted to say something too.
I will echo that phrase. I saw a couple of the custodial staff women yesterday in the building and they're just. Chipper and positive as always and the building was spotless and I know they've really had to up their game and I appreciate it.
I agree with. Both Laura and Jeff's statements, so. That was an all female crew who painted the interior of the building, so needless to say, they didn't leave a mess.
That answers everything.
Well said. Okay, thank you again, Ray and everybody though. This has been a Herculean task and. It's just, it's just great when a team comes together and it's, it's just, it's very heartwarming, at least from the world I come from and I'm sure. Everybody in the government building feels the same way, so. Next up is Development and Stormwater Management. Bob Thompson's the director. First up, we have an end dot local roads and bridge matching grant agreement. Scott, is, is Bob on or is it just you?
It's just me. This is the paperwork for the local roads for the state matching grant. For half a million dollars. This is the formal part of approving that agreement. So this is something we're all aware of and excited for.
Okay. So I'll put it to the floor for the board to take action.
Motion to approve. Always happy to approve grants that are coming our way.
Yeah. Yes, second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Auditor?
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Three to zero.
Thank you. Um, last, up here, we have an interlocal agreement with the city of Hobart for reconstruction in a right of way along County Ride Road. Along County Line Road, US six to just south of County seven hundred north. Attorney McClure, would you give, I know I asked you what this was for, so maybe you can share with the board?
Yeah, the, the city of Hobart on County Line Road is doing a significant drainage project. As part of that drainage project, because they're right on County Line Road, part of the right of way that there will be accessing. Is on our side of County Line Road, which is why we need to do an interlocal agreement with the city of Hobart. On the reconstruction of the right of way along the county road. We are not at this point participating in the project, but because it's our. Our right of way on our side, this is the type of agreement that needs to be approved so that that can continue on.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from Attorney McClure? Throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Auditor?
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Wow, that, that got through.
It came through.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And with that, we get to the end of our agenda. I would like to make another announcement here at the end of the meeting. Regarding the county building, we're going to be sending out a press release after this meeting today. That will be giving instructions on when we'll be reopening. But right now it appears that our testing of all of our county employees will be completed by this Friday. And we plan on coming back to. The county employees coming back to work on Tuesday after Memorial Day. And we will, the county building will stay closed for one additional week. That short week while we're reclaiming all of our employees and getting them back into the office. Getting them familiar with a lot of the work rules and the COVID rules. And a lot of the departments now have Plexiglas and have other things that have gone on while they've been gone. So we're gonna stay, the building will stay closed to the public. We will do appointments. For that week, so if you do want to have meet with someone, you could set up an appointment that week. We will, we will have masks in common areas. It will all be outlined in the email coming. But we'll also have enhanced cleaning protocols. I know the Buildings Facilities Department has been getting a lot of the products and the, and the things that we need for, for cleaning. Within their own offices and their own areas. We're getting that all put together with new cleaning instructions. We will also have thermometers that we can, and logs that we can test our people back and forth as they come to work and what have you, so. We have all the things in place, but if you're a county employee and you're watching this. You will all be called back to work on Tuesday. After, the day after Memorial Day. And the county building will be closed for that week. But we will, we will start allowing appointments and as people, there's a whole protocol that we'll be laying out. But this is the announcement today for, that that will take place. So I just wanted to make sure. That, that we've made that announcement. Like I said, there will be a press release and there will be interim communications. To the different departments as we go forward, so. Well, it's, 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 it's a good thing. I think it's good that we're able to, we were able to test our employees and get everybody back, so we sort of have a. A new starting point, a new beginning from Tuesday when we take, take. When we come back to the building, but again, I want to make it very clear to the public. That the building will be closed that short week after Memorial Day. We will, we will take appointments, so, but then after that week, the county building will be open. Give us a few days to do a trial run and work through some of the things that, the new normal. And then we'll be inviting the public back into the building. You know, after, after that week, so. Anything that you wanted to add to that, Laura or Scott or Commissioner Biggs?
Well, I appreciate that all the work everyone has done from home and on their skeleton crews. We really have still managed to crank a work product out, which has taken a lot of extra effort from everyone. And I appreciate that. I think all of the commissioners do. I can speak for them when I say that. And also I'm really looking forward to see everyone, seeing everyone. It's been a long couple of months.
I'll say. Lot of work has gone into this, but we just want to thank everybody. You know, those workers that were coming in, the skeleton crews that I know has done a yeoman's work. I know I stopped and saw one of the folks in the recorder's office the other day and they said that they're busier than ever because of the low interest rates and the refinances going on. The tax bills that need to be paid, a lot of other things that are going on in the county. And I, I think it's, it's, I'm glad that we're, we're able to slowly roll this thing back and get back to work and do it cautiously and I think. I think we're gonna come back as, as organized as we went out, so. Again, I, I appreciate everybody's help, like Laura said, so. With that, I think this board is done for the day. As Attorney McClure, did you have anything that we've missed? I know there's been a lot of stuff going on last few weeks, but have we missed anything?
No, we are currently testing, as we said Tuesday. With our current plan, obviously with the plan on opening for Tuesday or having all of the employees return to a normal work schedule. On Tuesday, we will continue the employee testing. It's happening, it happened yesterday. It's gonna continue all week long. We're looking at probably around very close to ninety a day happening, so that's progressing and as, as things keep going as they are, I think we're on a good plan. For next week and it's been quite an effort. To, well, I guess that would be a significant understatement. It's been quite a Herculean effort to get this done in the time period that it's been done and. Realistically how smooth it has been for the employees to get this done. Everyone knows it's not fun and everyone knows at this point that it's something that we're trying to do to protect everybody, so. I just appreciate everyone's cooperation and how well the testing got put together and organized, so I appreciate all the hard work that went into that.
Yes, and I'd like to add a special shout out to Rhonda Young in our HR department because she largely put the schedule together and. Everything came together quick. So she had a lot of work to do and it seemed almost seamless, so very much appreciated. And also appreciate all the employees heading over there. Wasn't a fun test, but it was quick and. We can all go back feeling reasonably secure and safe.
Yep, I know Laura and I were tested. I was tested last Thursday and I came out negative and so. For me, I know that was sort of a refreshing point in my life that. You know, now that as I go forward, I know that if anything happens, it's on me. And so, you know, that's accountability is what we're all, what this is all about. And I would also like to make another shout out to the man behind the curtain and that's Kurt Ellis. Kurt has been the one that is doing a lot of the messaging and our press releases and. This stuff is not easy to write. It's not easy to put in a fashion that makes sense. And we're very fortunate that we have a guy like Kurt back here and. Helping us and he gets calls all times of night, all times day. And so thank you Kurt as well. Rhonda and Kurt have just been wonderful through all this and I can't say enough. About them, so thank you. And with that, I think that, I think we've given out all the accolades that we could give it. We're all anxious to get back to work and do the business of the county and. Let everybody else sort of slowly enter their way back into life as we know it. And let's be positive, let's be responsible. And let's, let's move forward and let's keep the numbers down and keep our eye on the ball, so thank you. And you'll be seeing us, I'm sure, soon, but thank you for tuning in today and with that, this board stands in recess.